Counsel would come to order. It is 7:00 PM. Every member of the council that's present, we do have a quorum. In just a minute, I'll ask you to stand. We'll be led in invocation by Pastor Barry Klingon of the Church at Trophy Lakes. And Barry is somewhere, there he is back there. And then we'll be led in pledges to the United States flag and the Texas flag by Councilmember Bone. Please stand.
The ancient book of Psalms says, "Blessed is the man that walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of the scornful; but his delight is in the law of the Lord, and in his law doth he meditate day and night. He shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water, that bringeth forth his fruit in his season. His leaf also shall not wither, and whatsoever he doeth, shall prosper." Our Father, we take time in this council meeting to stop and acknowledge you. And Lord, we recognize you as the giver of all good and perfect blessings that come down from above. And Lord, we honor you tonight. And Father, we come to this time to pray and ask you to bless this meeting and to bless our city. I pray, Lord, you would continue to bless our mayor, giving him strength, giving him wisdom, and giving him healing in his life. And Lord, I pray and thank you for the council members that serve. Pray you would continue to give them that wisdom and strength as well, and allow them to have their time multiplied at home with their families for the time that they invest here in the city. And Father, we pray for our town manager, all of our staff that serve so diligently to make this city what it is. We pray, God, your richest blessings upon them. We pray healing and grace and strength on all of their families. Father, we pray for our fire chief and our police chief and all the men and women that serve this city to protect us at all times. And Lord, we're thankful for that. We pray that you would continue to put a hedge of protection around them, that every day might be safe and that, Lord, they might be protected in all things. Father, we bless you and pray that this night, the business that is before the city, will be done expeditiously and diligently. And I pray that, Lord, we'd always remember to honor those around us, even those that we disagree with. Help us, Lord, as a city, to be civil and just in such a way that other cities look at us as a model of how it's to be done. Lord, we ask that blessing tonight on this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated. We're at the section of our agenda for public comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council. Presentations are to be limited to a matter over which the council has authority. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the presiding officer. Each speaker must complete a speaker's form to include the topics of your statement or may be submitted via email to mayorandcouncil@trophyclub.org. I don't see that anybody submitted anything. Do we have anything, Letty?
No, sir.
All right, we will then move on, had no one wishing to speak. Item number one, receive town manager and our awards update and provide input regarding the following in reference to the CARES fund update. Steve, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, the COVID has impacted this entire country. I don't think any industry has been exempt. Cities did receive funding, kind of a pass-through from the federal government. It was sent to the state, and then the state sent that to counties. And we're receiving around $650,000 from Denton County and about $20,000 from Tarrant County. That is not just, you know, a gift and say, gee, thanks, we're going to enjoy spending it. There's very strict rules on what you can and cannot do with it. You know, the most notable and most obvious is it has to be related to COVID expenses, whether that's police overtime, fire overtime, whether that's supplies, whether that's equipment that was needed to address the expenses. It is not, and a lot of cities have really tried to push the envelope, so to speak, it is not allowed to be used to offset revenue losses. A lot of cities had huge impacts from bars and restaurants being closed and obviously hotels. A lot of cities relied on that for tourism, but you cannot use that to offset revenue. The funding or the expenses can only be on those related to, or out-of-pocket expenses related to COVID from about mid-March through December 20th. It's only that time period. Could they extend it? Possibly, not certain, but those are the rules that we have at this point. We are keeping very diligent records on everything that we spend, from face masks to sanitizers to equipment, you name it. To date, we're at about $33,000 we've spent, maybe a little bit more as of today, and that has nothing to do with overtime costs for police and fire. There were occasions where we had to send officers home, we had to send some firemen home to be quarantined, then we're backfilling. Finance is keeping very accurate records. Department heads are sending those in weekly to make sure that we have a good cost accounting. So as it gets closer to, I think about November is when they want to start seeing, people start doing reporting. We do a monthly reporting now, but as far as to start looking at our overall expenses, November's going to start where we're going to have to really start sending that information in. You know, I've seen some cities, they're buying fire trucks with it, they're buying ambulances. A city in Arizona used it, spent $1.4 million on road maintenance. Now, that seems like an awfully big stretch, but, and maybe they had to spend a lot of money on COVID, it took away from street maintenance, you know? Who knows? But at the end of the day, I want to make sure that we're being cautious and conservative on what we spend those dollars on, that it's justified, that it's accurate and reasonable. Because at the end of the day, I don't know if auditors are going to come in in a year or two years, or if the county's on the hook for those dollars, are they going to go out and hire private auditors to come in and look at those monies? So, but again, we're being, I think, very pragmatic in those expenses. So, again, as it gets closer to it, we'll give you updates as far as what we're looking at as some operational impacts. But again, I think most cities are in a similar position, that received a lot of money, and I think a lot of cities outside of maybe Dallas and Fort Worth, probably going to be a challenge to use all that money, and just because it's there doesn't mean, you know, we have a right to go spend it. It's going to be watched pretty closely. So, that's the latest update on our CARES funding.
Thanks, Steve. Counsel, any questions? All right, seeing no one wishing to speak, we will then move on to item number two. We did have a couple of businesses we were going to focus on. Those people were not prepared to come, and so they canceled yesterday, and so we'll just move past that item and do it at a later date. Item number three, take appropriate action issuing proclamation 2020-07, proclaiming September 2020 as Live United Month in Trophy Club. And we have Pat Sherman here to say a few words to us about United Way. Pat, you want to come to the microphone? You can take your mask off if you wish to do so.
I would love to do so. Thank you. I do serve on the board of United Way of Denton County, and I want to tell you about our eviction prevention program that really is the ultimate example of United Way's ability to convene public and private resources, collaborating across government, business, and nonprofit sectors. In that program, we have provided over 1,393 households with rent, utility, and/or mortgage assistance across 29 different municipalities in Denton County, including a few here in Trophy Club. Though, the program has provided 1,975 months of assistance to neighbors impacted by COVID-19 to help them stay in their homes. We encourage anyone facing eviction due to income loss from the pandemic to contact United Way at unitedwaydenton.org/findhelp. And we appreciate your support of United Way and Live United Month.
Thank you, Pat, very much. It's our way of trying to raise awareness about Denton County United Way, and we hope that our residents will pay attention to this and support your organization for helping so many people. So at this time, I would call upon, did I give that one to you, Philip?
Yes, you did.
You would read the proclamation and make the motion?
All right. Whereas United Way of Denton County is unparalleled in the power to convene partners, providers, and resources to address the needs of neighbors in crisis, and whereas United Way of Denton County has been identifying Denton County's needs and responding to them for over 65 years, and whereas United Way of Denton County works with a network of nonprofits across Denton County to address needs, including feeding those who face food insecurity, preparing children for success in school, work, and life, and connecting those in crisis with resources to pay bills and stay in their homes, and whereas United Way of Denton County is committed this year more than ever before to bring people together to help our communities recover and thrive, now therefore, Mayor C. Nick Sanders asks you to join United Way of Denton County Board, donors, volunteers, and partners in calling on all residents of the town of Trophy Club, Texas, to live united and hereby proclaim September 2020 as Live United in Trophy Club Month. And I will make the motion to approve proclamation September 2020 as Live United Month in Trophy Club.
Second.
So Carl made a second, and Philip moved. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Just stay there a second for Mr. Sherman, and I'll bring the proclamation. Get you to turn that way, and leave your mask off. And we'll get a picture. Now, do not get my legs short.
Yeah, sure. Waist up. Turn the phone.
Yeah, I saw you smiling on that face. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. For those of you who didn't know, I went to get a Fletcher's Carney dog this afternoon, stood in line for over an hour, and at 20 minutes till 7:00, there was no way I was going to get there, and Steve Flynn, who's president of the mud board, was first in line at that point. He turned and looked at me, and I went.
How many?
And, well, two for Leonard, two for me.
Oh, okay. Hungry.
And so, anyway, so then I grabbed him and ran, and I'm going, I don't think I can change clothes and get there. So, anyway, you got me the way you got me.
That's okay, we didn't want any.
Oh, well, too bad, you got me anyway. All right, item number four, take appropriate action issuing proclamation 2020-08, proclaiming September 17, 2020 as North Texas Giving Day in Trophy Club. And we have Susan Etstrom here to receive the proclamation. Susan, would you like to make some remarks?
Susan, where have you been, Susan?
I've been rescuing.
And if you want to take your mask off, you can.
Okay.
We maybe could hear you better.
Okay. I've been rescuing animals, Philip. So, I want to thank you for your support of the proclamation in North Texas Giving Tuesday. I'm pretty excited about this. So a couple of things. Last year, I actually received my EIN on September 17. So North Texas Giving Tuesday is September 17. So it's exactly a year of me receiving my EIN to be a nonprofit, so I'm pretty excited about that. So obviously, I pored through all their materials going, what else can I do? And I found this proclamation, and I was like, hey, Nick, can we do this? And he said, of course. So if we want to point to one positive that I at least have experienced out of COVID, is I have quadrupled the number of fosters that I have, because people were calling me going, you know what? I'm at home all day. I can do this. And I never intended, I figured I was going to adopt out maybe 50 or 60 animals a year. I've adopted out almost 150 since the first of the year, and a lot of that has to do with COVID, because people are like, I'm home, I can do this now. The, you know, we can get the kitten, the dog, or whoever, you know, acclimated. So North Texas Giving Tuesday has pumped more than $290 million into North Texas. It's a 18-hour fundraiser, and I just want to make sure everybody participates as they can. Nonprofits are hurting, just like everybody else is. Events that they depended on for large fundraising didn't happen because of COVID, and so this is a way to try to give back through North Texas Giving Tuesday, and I appreciate all the support that I've gotten from the community in the town as I've ventured out on my own here doing this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. This time, I'd recognize Carl Monger to read our proclamation and make the motion.
Proclamation, September 17, 2020, as North Texas Giving Day in Trophy Club. Whereas North Texas Giving Day is an 18-hour online giving event designed to empower every person to give back to their community by supporting local nonprofits and causes they care about in one easy-to-use platform, and whereas the 12th Annual North Texas Giving Day will take place on September 17, 2020. Since its inception in 2009, North Texas Giving Day has pumped more than $290 million into the local communities, benefiting more than 3,000 nonprofit agencies. In 2019, the 18-hour online giving event raised a record-breaking $50 million. And whereas, North Texas Giving Day is one of the many ways the Communities Foundation of Texas serves as a hub for philanthropy. As one of the largest foundations in the nation, Communities Foundation of Texas works with the North Texas community to strengthen the region through a variety of charitable funds and strategic grant-making initiatives. And whereas, on September 17, 2020, donations can be made from 6:00 AM to midnight to more than 3,000 certified local nonprofits in the 20-county DFW area listed on www.north Texas Giving Day dot org, encouraging all Trophy Club citizens to take part in this special event and support your local nonprofits. And whereas, it is fitting improper on North Texas Giving Day and every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy in the town of Trophy Club. Now therefore, I, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Trophy Club Town Council, do hereby proclaim September 17, 2020, as North Texas Giving Day in Trophy Club, Texas. And I move that we adopt this proclamation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Sean. So Councilmember Bone moved by, Councilmember Monger. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. So wait just a second.
Okay.
I know you got a shorty here, they might show up.
I noticed that you're further back than you were a while ago. Somehow, I think that you're probably...
You're in trouble.
I think so. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
And so, encourage everybody to look for ways that you can participate on National Giving Day and support our local charities. Very much appreciate it for them. It is time for our consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered individually. We have items five and six. Does anybody wish to remove either of those? Seeing no one wanting to do so, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items five and six.
Second.
All right. Moved by Bone, second by Garrassi. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. All right, it is 7:19 PM, and we will enter into a public hearing on fiscal year 2020, I mean, 20, yeah, 2020-2021 annual budget that includes the budget for EDC 4B. So at this time, I would recognize Mike Irwin and see if he has any comments about what we're considering, and then allow people to ask questions about that. If you want to take, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, this is a presentation that we looked at on August 11. I'll run through it quickly. If there's been any, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those for you at this time. The town, the staff has not made any adjustments to the proposed budget that was presented to y'all, that we delivered to the town secretary on the 4th, and that we presented to council, and that we discussed on the 11th. We've left, we've left it just as it was presented. As we talk about, as we mentioned previously, when we walked away from February, there were three things to accomplish. The ILA, which was accomplished, leave the tax rate the same, which we did on this, and the squad concept for the fire department, which we have budgeted for in this. We've also done some additional police overtime. We did not add any FTEs to this budget, and the proposed budget did not include any salary increases. At the meeting on the 11th, council brought up the idea of taking a look and seeing if there was a possibility of adding some salary increases to this year's budget, and we took in, we took a look at that, and we came up with a plan, if it's council's desire for us to move forward to that. What we looked at is our fire and police are below the low point of their salary range, and originally, the police officers were at 52 last year. This year, in the budget, they came to 55. We're looking at moving them to 58. We're looking at moving the fire officers up also. And then, we had about six or eight employees that we found were below market, and we're looking to move those up closer to market. And then for other employees, it would just be a $750 stop. The total cost of it is around $130,000. And the way we would recommend funding this is, if you remember my discussion on sales tax, we had left the number flat. Well, we continue to see good sales tax numbers, and in fact, my estimate would be this year, we'll probably finish the year at about $1,001,000 in sales tax revenue for the general fund. So I would recommend adjusting the sales tax $70,000 in the proposed budget to $1,050,000. Still not going to where I think we'll end this year, but adding an additional $70,000 in revenue. The other areas would be 25,000. I originally budgeted $50,000 for building permits, which is an extremely conservative number, given the fact of what we've seen in the past, but we no longer have large commercial projects that'll be pulling building permits. And so, but I would recommend, we've averaged about $250,000 in building permits in prior years, or 200 to 250. So I'd recommend, if we're interested in doing the pay plan, to bump it up to $75,000 on building permits, and then take miscellaneous permits, which I budgeted at $100,000, again being very conservative and trying to learn the community. And we've seen about $150,000 the last couple of years in revenue in miscellaneous permits, and as people are staying home, as they're doing remodel, we'll probably continue to see that. And so I'd recommend another $25,000 increase, so for that revenue line item, to be able to fund the pay plan. So that would be about $120,000. And if you remember the proposed budget, the revenues were greater than the expenditures by $44,000. I just wanted to put that out on the table. That's not a decision for right now, and I'll continue my presentation, but I did want to acknowledge that that question was asked, we did research it, and that is how we would get to it, if that was a choice of council. Once again, to talk about the property tax rate, we're at last year's rate, as y'all, as council directed us, which is a rate below both the no new tax rate, which until this year was called the effective rate, and it's also below the voter approval rate, which until this year was called the rollback rate. So we kept our tax rate below both the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate as we left it at council's direction. And you can see on the far right, the additional property tax revenue we recognized was $166,000, but the new was 232, which means by not going up to the no new revenue rate, we left about $65,000 on the table that we could have gone up to to go to the no new revenue rate. And again, we were staying at the rate that we'd had previously. A couple of things, we talked about prior property tax, we went up, license and permits, we dropped. If we made those changes, we would decrease that 110 by $60,000. We also saw an increase in the amount that the mud is contributing to the town, and we saw an increase in franchise fees accordingly. I estimated the EMS revenues, charges for service, a little bit lower, and also the interest that we had earned in the past years. My predecessors had cut a great deal on some CDs at about 2%, which we're not going to see again. So, this is just a recap of our expenditures. $50,000 for the part-time, which will allow us to put the squad in place, which we're, which we think will benefit the community. And then also an additional $30,000 for police overtime. We have some other personnel costs. And then there's about $32,000 more in information services, contractuals, as we've seen increases. And then there's $50,000 in communications for professional outside services. Jill, her budget this year is a standalone budget, and one of the things that we've talked about and seen is that videos do much better than the printed word in sending a message out, and so we wanted to be able to have funding available to be able to continue to do that. Another question that was asked at the last meeting was about volunteers, what we're seeing there. And we just put a slide up. These are some quick estimated numbers that we wanted to present. Top number shows you about what we spend on our volunteers, and the second number shows the number of hours that we're estimated to be receiving from our volunteers in the town. If you looked at it, if you look at those numbers in, say, $15 an hour, you can see that we're spending about $2,500, $2,600, and we're getting about $61,000 in benefit from that, if you look at it at $15 an hour. So we just wanted to, we were asked about that at the last council meeting, we wanted to provide this slide to provide this information.
Do we reach out to those groups to see if there's needs other than, or is this just, how do you come up with these numbers? Where do you get these numbers from?
All three numbers I got from the department directors.
So do you know if the department is reaching out to these groups to see if there's needs that perhaps, because I guess, you know, that when you, when you say, you know, $15 an hour, whatever, and it would have cost us this...
Right.
It's my goal as someone who sits on council to make sure that we provide, because I've realized the impact that volunteers make on the town.
Yes, sir.
So in other words, if we had to pay all of those hours, it would, we couldn't afford it.
Right.
And so, I didn't, I just don't know if we reach out to these groups to see if there's certain needs that they have that are not being met, that perhaps we can contribute more to help with them with special projects or special needs, things like that. So, you know, maybe it's already being done, and if so, that's great. It just seems, it seems low to me, you know, that there surely is other needs that perhaps we're not meeting.
I believe that they are, is my understanding. I know this year, you know, we typically would have some volunteer appreciation dinner or something of that magnitude, but with COVID, a lot of those things got kind of postponed, if you will, but I'll confirm and double-check just to make sure, but it's my understanding that they are.
Okay. And if... And if anybody's listening, volunteers, you know, I certainly would encourage you to get with whichever director that you perhaps work with, that there's needs, to let them know, so that we can be informed.
Philip, will you pull your mic down a little bit now that we finish talking?
All right.
You couldn't hear me? That thing kind of freaks me out.
I understand. All right. Once again, just to cover the capital projects that we've talked about previously, and we have the three funds that we are funding through additional general fund fund balance. Anything over 35%, we look at moving over. This year, it was about $1 million. Capital projects fund, we had about, we estimated to have about $1,004,000 of 2017 dollars left over, and we're putting them to Meadow Brook, to Trophy Lake, and then panel replacements. And we've got about 147,000 for panel replacement, 700,000 Meadow Brook, 600 Trophy Lake. And our goal is to get all our 2017 money spent, as we discussed, so that this time next year, if we go out for debt again, we're not sitting there with old bond proceeds hanging out and out. And so, we'll look to spend that, and that will leave this fund, the capital projects fund, with a fund balance of the 500,000 that we're moving over. Same thing for the equipment replacement fund, we're looking at some EMS and fire equipment. We're also looking for a truck, a pickup truck, because currently, the fire chief drives an Explorer. That vehicle will become the squad vehicle, and then he'll drive the truck that's coming in. And then Parks is looking at a new truck, some new mowers. They're also looking at maintenance on the pool. And then finally, on information services, we budgeted 125, and that will be for needs that we'll identify in this coming year. Debt service is pretty self-explanatory. The one thing that we, the one challenge that we do have there is, due to the new state law, we had to recognize 356,000 of excess collections this year, which meant we're having to dip into our fund balance at that amount this year, due to the new calculation. And so, that's something that's not, it should not hurt us in '21, but we'll need to keep an eye on to make sure that, because our fund balance was only about 500,000 to start with, and so it's going to eat up a little over half of that this year. And that was, when I talked to the county, there wasn't, there wasn't an option, there wasn't a discussion, there was, this number goes in the calculation, and you'll just have to live with it.
You talked about the balance in the debt service fund.
Sir, it's about 500,000 now, and the way this budget is set up, we'll be spending over 300,000 of it for our debt service payments. And just to put you at ease a little bit, we would have done that, no matter if we had refunded two weeks ago or not. The, the way it was set up, we were going to have to dip into that fund balance. Hotel occupancy tax, we cut the revenue estimate in about half. I would like to compliment all our hoteliers, they're all up to date on their hotel occupancy tax payments, and I'm not sure all communities are able to say that at this time, but they've all, they've all been diligent in their responsibilities. Expenditures on that, we have 175,000 in there, as we've discussed. That was the original monument, entryway monument bid was about around 175,000. That was what was put into the budget. I know there's future discussions coming up on that, and so, but we wanted to put a placeholder in the budget for that amount. The street maintenance fund, we have 100,000 in there for street repairs, for the panel repairs, and if you go back to the capital projects, where we also have 147,000, that gives us about 247,000 for next year that can go to the street panel replacements.
Before you leave there.
Yes, sir.
Is there, what's the rule on minimum fund balance for debt service? And where does the county, how does the county come in on that?
Typically, a finance person would like to see one year of debt service in the fund balance, and that's kind of where I've been in other communities. The challenge is Senate Bill 2 decided, I don't know if decided is the right word, but there was a, the legislation was written so they didn't want that fund balance sitting out there. Basically, they're willing for that to come down, the fund balance in debt service. If that law had not been put in place over time, it would have been my goal to have built the towns up to about one year, but we have this new law in place, and we're going to have to live with it. What it will ultimately lead to is you'll, is the total dollars in your debt service fund will be that year's debt service payment, with no cushion. And so, that's why I was saying it's something we'll have to pay attention to in the future. And then we touched on streets. Parkland dedication, we've talked about this previously. The plan is to see the multifamily finish in PD 30, which will be another 150,000 from the agreement, come to Parkland dedication. We currently have a placeholder of 100,000 in expenditures. That could, in the June 23 meeting, we talked about pickleball courts. There's also been discussions potentially of playground equipment replacement that might run more than that, but we have that currently in the budget. Trophy Club Park, if you remember, the debt, the fund balance on that's negative. We're waiting, we're doing some repairs currently, and we're waiting to see the grant dollars come in for those repairs. And then our storm drainage, we've added 100,000 in contract labor, so that we can hire out people, to hire out for our drainage creeks to be cleaned in this next year.
Steve, quick question. You've been talking with folks impacted by the flooding on Indian Creek?
Mm-hmm.
Are there, have you thought about any dollars? Is there anything that we need to have in the budget? Is it already programmed in for potential expenditures along that?
No, the, the next step, and we, hopefully, we should have something conceptually here, probably in the next two to three weeks, and then we'll meet with the homeowners again. But then, the next step would be to design whatever is the recommended option. So, and we've got funds to do that, but then, we're going to be sitting here next year trying to allocate, whether it's a million dollar fix, or 500,000, or 2 million. So, but for the next year, it's going to be surveying what's there, you know, doing the engineering design, and by the time you bid it and award it, I mean, it's, you know, that'll, that'll chew up the year.
Thank you. And then finally, the EDC 4B, most of their expenditures are debt service, and then our TIRS fund. So. The, we had this slide at the first one, we've accomplished the first two actions tonight. We're currently having a budget hearing. The next action item would be for council to take action, as they choose. September 8, we would have a tax rate hearing and approve the tax rate, and then also, beginning September 8, and then also the second meeting in September, we will work through the PID responsibilities at that time. We just, this past week, got the tax rate from the mud for the PID, and so we can start that for the next council meeting. That should take care of all the responsibilities for this year.
Thank you, Mike. Letty, do we have any citizens that signed up to speak?
No, sir, no.
All right, so Philip wanted to speak, but what I'm going to suggest is that we go on to item 8.
That's fine.
And close our public hearing, would that be okay, Philip? So you can all talk about those kind of issues later. All right, so it is 7:39, and we're going to close the public hearing and move on to item 8. Take appropriate action approving ordinance 2020-10, adopting the Town of Trophy Clubs' fiscal year 2021 annual budget and EDC 4B annual budget. Just as a comment for everyone, we don't take action to approve a detailed line item budget. We approve an overall dollar budget, and as you've seen in some of that, there are various places where there have been amounts put in the budget, but that doesn't mean they stay there, and we've identified a couple of items that we won't address. And so, if in fact, there's not funds available in the current budget that could be used for projects you might come up with, and one of those was mentioned, a pay increase maybe in police to kind of change that philosophy of what we're doing, that could come back as a budget adjustment. So you didn't necessarily have to worry about all that detail, because we don't have that detail tonight to say, what's it really going to cost to change that? How would that maybe affect the budget? And you've already seen that there are items in the budget that are just placeholder dollar amounts. They're flexible. So, just encourage you that the, the plan at this time, as you've had this budget, we talked about a few changes, there's a few ups and downs, and we'll have a chance to deal with that. This budget would be used to calculate the rate, and next meeting, we will set the tax rate. So if you wanted to set the tax rate lower, then you would have to change the budget in some fashion. Now, there are a couple of things that happened as Mike and Steve met with each of us and went through the budget. Initially, the estimated sales tax revenue was lower, as Mike mentioned, and then we've now got several months worth of reporting that is higher than what we thought it would be, and so, they went ahead and adjusted the annual sales tax estimate up a little bit, which allowed us to have more income and keep the tax rate the same to accomplish that task. Another excellent thing that they've done is, if you were to look at our 2019-2020 budget, which is going to end in 40 days, or whatever that is, odds are, we will come in under budget. So there would be money available in the budget that we collected money for but didn't use, and that money is being used in a fashion to fund those debt service items that we did as a council. So, we're taking that excess that says I had income greater than expenses, we're holding expenses where they are for this fiscal year, and being able to take those dollars, whatever they end up, and say, okay, we're going to roll that to debt service, and you saw the idea of how we're going to fund those various things, and in fact, we looked at that to say that we're funding those over the next few years and using expenses for that. All right. So our function in item 8 is to take an appropriate action to pass ordinance 2020-10, adopting our annual budget and ECD budget, EDC budget, can't even say that. So, at this time, it'd be appropriate to move and adoption, and then, if we get a second, then we can debate items of that budget. Do I have someone wishing to move?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 8, 2020-239 Tango, the annual budget and EDC 4B budget.
Okay, let me, just one item, as the mayor was touching on, the pay adjustment is not included in that budget number. So, I think what the mayor is saying, and I agree with everything he said, is if, if this is something you want to do, then approve the budget with an additional 140,000 of expenses for pay plan, and that will be put into town manager's budget or finance budget, and then we'll divvy it out.
So can we say then, Letty?
All right, I'm going to call out of order just a minute.
That's right.
We have a motion made without a second, so we're not supposed to discuss.
He just seconded it.
Well, I didn't recognize a second. Okay, so, all right, so longer seconded, and so now the items are before us. Okay, go ahead.
In order to adjust that for that, the item, the paid adjustment there, do I need to, Letty, procedurally, do I need to rescind my motion?
No, you would need to have, if the motion has a second, there would have to be a motion and a second to amend the budget.
Okay.
May I interrupt, please? What you may do at this point in time, you may amend your motion as the mayor asked.
Okay.
Or you may just ask for a friendly amendment, which would not require you to do that, and as long as the seconder is in favor of that friendly amendment, then there's nothing else to do.
You in favor of, great, I'd like to amend the motion to account for the pay increase budget that'd be added later.
So how much money?
140,000, we're talking?
Yes.
140,000.
If I can detail that, just so we have it on record for sure.
Yes, please, please.
Okay. We would take 140,000 in expenditures, and we would put it in the town manager's office line item, as one single line item, to be dispersed among the departments. On the, on the revenue side, to pay for this, we're starting at 44,000 to the good, based on where our revenues versus expenditures were. We'll add 70,000 to sales tax to move that from 980,000 to $1,050,000, which is still about 50,000 less than where I think we'll come in for this year in sales tax. Then we'll add 25,000 to building permits to move that from 50 to 75,000, and we'll add 25,000 to miscellaneous permits to move that up from 100,000 to 125,000. That would be a total of 120,000 in new revenue, plus the 44,000 that was currently available, which would give us about 164,000, and the expenditure would be 140,000, still leaving us with a balanced budget.
All right, so Michael's motion is to approve the budget with an increase of 140,000. That would be an expense item in the town manager's budget for compensation and benefits, I would assume. Is that right? And then there would be changes to sales tax revenues to plus 70,000.
Yes, sir.
Building permits, 25,000 increase, and miscellaneous permits, 25,000.
Yes, sir.
And then you had 44,000 already in the budget, in excess of what we were spending.
Yes, sir.
All right, and does the mover agree to this motion?
I do.
All right. So the motion was made with those changes, and the second does agree, so the matter is properly before us. Philip, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, first of all, I appreciate the fact that you did go back and listen to what we said as far as pay increases. I'm not a huge fan of stipends. I never have been, and I've fought early on in my career against them, and ultimately, we did away with them. But I understand this year, the only thing that I would ask is that you somehow tie the stipend to a performance review, you know? So in other words, we're not just handing out, you know, back in those days, and I forget, Nick, what number that they came to us every year for, it, I didn't really like them because, you know, when you give somebody some, the same amount, year after year after year, the first year you don't give it, they get mad, well, where's my money? You know? And so, we eventually, because they were adamant about having the stipend, we eventually tied that to a performance review. And, and so, because as businessmen, I think that in any business that we have, you want to reward those that work hard for you. Now, I know that there's a huge conflict between a business and a local government, you know, it just butts heads, but I think that there's always, you know, performance reviews and stipends, to me, can work, you know, to encourage somebody to work a little harder than what they should. And, and like I say, I've always been somebody who, who wants to reward the employee who does the hard work, you know, that's just business 101. You want to give that employee something and treat that employee, you know, fairly. But again, I appreciate you looking at those who are underpaid and trying to at least, you know, bring those up to where, closer to where they should be, so I think that that's important going into future years. So thanks. So thanks.
Carl, you have the floor.
Yeah, I actually want to thank Councilmember Schaffner for bringing that up at the last meeting to relook the pay increase when town manager said freeze it. So thanks for doing that. And I like the comment about doing the review. I don't know that you need to do a special review, right? If you're not doing pay raises across the board, I would imagine you're still going to do the annual review when the annual reviews are due. So I don't know that you need to plug in another additional review, right? So I trust you to make the call on that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I see no one else seeking the floor. Do I have any residents who want to speak on the budget? Seeing no one wishing to take the floor, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the 2020-21 annual budget as amended in the motion and the EDC 4B budget, please show your hands. It is unanimous. It is approved. So just as clarification, our next meeting, we will set the tax rate that we were already going to set, which is an identical tax rate to what we had in the current fiscal year.
Yes, sir.
All right. And at that time, just to let everybody know, there will be a roll call vote to approve the tax rate.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number nine, review and discuss amending ordinance 2017-19 of the Town Council Rules of Procedures. So if you look at your packet, page 111, there are four items that have been discussed in the past or have been looked at, as Letty has reviewed some of this. And so one of the items is that it provides a process for excused attendance from council meetings. And so we talked about that in the past. It was difficult to handle. How could you take action excusing someone from being absent if you didn't get notice in time to put it on the agenda? So it meant you were excusing after the fact. And so Letty's been surveying other towns, looking at that, and we'll have some words to deal with when we're ready to take action on that. The other item is updates to the council meeting location. Well, actually, in our rules of procedures, we are at the wrong location. So that is a clerical kind of thing to update. And the third one is defer to the state law on emergency-called council meetings. We currently have had this situation where there was emergency declarations we were dealing with. It's pretty rare for us. We were having to deal with council meetings as to where they were, and even at the last minute, have to do some type of electronic council meeting as opposed to in present. And in some cases, that meant a member of council maybe stayed absent from our local meeting, and the governor relaxed open meetings laws. And so we were able to do that, but that's not what our rules of procedures say. So Letty's working with other city secretaries around the state, coming up with ways that we can draft that in a fashion that will not have problems in the future. And then provides that the mayor may issue proclamations as needed as opposed to coming to council. And so some of those items we've talked about, others we have not talked about, but Letty has done a review of our rules of procedures. Letty, if I go to the rules of procedure, what you did is highlight the sections in yellow that you listed in that. Now, there were a number of other clerical errors, but they're not highlighted in yellow, but there were a number of places that capitalization or punctuation wasn't right, and so Letty's done some cleanup of that. So the way our charter reads is that we have to bring those things forward before we actually consider to take action. Am I stating that right? Philip, is that Letty? So this is our chance to bring it forward, let the people know that we're thinking about changing those things before we actually change them. And so we don't really have proposed wording tonight, but this would be an opportunity. If you have some item that's in the rules of procedures that you want to bring back at our next meeting with wording, then we need to know tonight if, what that section might be. What happens to us in this, if we bring it back and you want to change it in substance at the next meeting, we couldn't approve it at the next meeting because we have not presented it as a possible discussion item. Does that make sense? So we have to let the people know, hey, you might have an item to talk about, meeting agendas or attendance or all of that kind of thing, and so we're doing that tonight. So anybody got any questions about that, or Letty, any comments? No comments, Letty?
Well, I have a couple of comments, actually. I have a couple of suggestions. Can you hear me okay? So as far as the attendance, let's tackle that first.
All right.
What I'd like to suggest is, right now, the way it's worded is okay, with the exception of where it reads, notice to the town secretary shall be provided. Let's add in written notice. And the reason for that, the logic for that would be, then I have something that I can hold as a record of your absence. And if anyone would like to request it, they may. That way, it stays on file with me, if that's something that you would like to see placed in that section.
All right, we're not voting on that, but that's a suggestion. Any comments about that to Letty?
The only thing I would say is, because it happened to me once, is driving down the freeway, is be able to call you, because it's just for safety. And if you want to send me an email back or any council member back saying, I received your email or phone call or whatever. So I'd just say some type of official notice that's documented, if that's something you wanted to discuss. That'd be my only comment to that matter.
All right. Anybody else about that particular item?
So we're talking about an excused absence on attendance. If we, if the particular council member notifies the town secretary, does that constitute an excused absence without council having to take action?
That would be the debate at some point when we consider that, but that's the idea.
Okay. Because I'm all for that particular thing.
If, the idea is if notification was given to this town secretary that you can't make a meeting, then that's the requirement to be have an excused absence.
That makes sense.
Does that make sense? We don't have to vote on it, nobody has to approve it, you notify.
And the reason that we, I think that this all came up is because we did have somebody who traveled quite a bit, and Nick was typically calling me the day of a council meeting and saying, now, has he missed two meetings? Has he missed three meetings? Where are we at on this? And we're always having to try to figure out. And my contention was that if you don't want to be on council, you're probably not going to reach out to anybody. You're just going to fall off the face of the earth, and you're not going to call the town secretary, you're not going to call the mayor. And we're going to know pretty quick that, you know, this person just has no desire to be on council. But if you, obviously, if you're working, traveling, you're certainly going to reach out. Typically, when I would miss, I would email the town secretary and the mayor and let them know. And so there was a written record. And I've always thought that that should be the excused absence. You know, you're not missing because you typically have a reason. And so that's kind of where I stand on excused absence.
All right, can I remove you from the speaker list?
Yes.
Or do you have something else?
No, on that particular item, that's it.
Okay. And Michael, you removed yourself.
I removed myself.
Okay. And so to kind of step down this, the next item is 1.03.033A, which is the regular meeting, which we talked about. It says 100 Municipal Drive. That kind of is a no-brainer.
You don't want to go back to the mud, Billy?
Yeah, well, recognize that we had a meeting at 100 Municipal Drive that was a joint meeting. So somehow, that needs to be allowed for in that description.
But this is just regular meetings.
Right.
Right. So I have, I just put in there, the town council shall primarily meet at 1 Trophy Club, Trophy Wood Drive.
Because we actually have had workshop sessions that were meetings at someplace else. All right? And then item C in that same section, emergency meetings, where we were talking about, how do we deal with some of that when we have emergency declarations and those kind of things? And was that your last one, or was there was another one?
There's one more, but what I wanted to say on emergency meetings, there is provisions already in our state law that requires certain things be done and posted in a certain manner in order to have an emergency meeting. So my suggestion on that particular section is just to refer to and defer and use state law, because it has changed from time to time, and I'd hate for you to have to be adjusting it every time it changes.
All right. And where is the other one?
It's on, I think it's the last.
That was it. That was it. Okay, no more yellow markings, okay.
There is a new section, which is the last one that I had mentioned in my staff report. And that new section, if you recall, at one of our last meetings, Mayor, you had asked that you be able to issue proclamations as needed. And one of the issues that we discussed, if you recall, was if we don't have a council meeting and someone requests a proclamation, is it something you can do? Absolutely, it is. You wanted that written into the rules and procedures, if you recall. Now, we can make this the exception and not the rule.
How we implement it, obviously, is up to the council. For instance, tonight, we had people that were going to receive those proclamations, and so we put that as part of action items. Had no one gone to become for the proclamation, then we would have put them in consent and just passed them and not dealt with them in a one-on-one case, which gives you the flexibility to deal with that. All right.
Yeah, and, you know, we generally don't see proclamations. Proclamations typically will come to the mayor, like tonight, you saw where Susan said that she reached out to Nick about putting that proclamation. So we don't vote on proclamations as far as should they be on the agenda, should they not be on the agenda. But I've always thought that the mayor would, there might be times when things come to the mayor that he should be able to do, issue a proclamation, and without having to involve all of council, since we don't see proclamations typically. You know, obviously, if an individual council member wants to put, do a proclamation, we, you know, he gets with Nick or gets with the mayor and does that, which is great. And I think, you know, that's good. But since they don't come to us, I think that the mayor ought to have that flexibility to issue proclamations that might come up that don't require public appearance and things of that nature.
So can you just advise us here to not debate the items? Whether we like them or not like them, it's just do we have them to consider?
Yeah. So there's one that I would like to just highlight and see about changing, and that is, it's F, let me see, 1.03.035F. I think it's page 118. So we don't have a designated timekeeper. And I think that that should be more, the mayor has the flexibility, which typically, Nick, you've done in the past for citizens' presentations, things of that nature. We limit, you know, to four minutes of time, you know, during citizens' presentation and, or actually, any, you know, any agenda item, and then two minutes to follow up. And it says the designated timekeeper shall maintain the time and advise the speaker when his or her time has expired. And I think that's a throwback to Chief Niffen, who used to keep the little clock. And I think that that should be more the mayor's responsibility to kind of oversee that, because there's times when you will give somebody more flexibility, you know? And there are times when you limit the flexibility because there's.
You're past your four-minute.
Multiple, see, I know. I get, I get my additional two minutes. So anyway, that's one that I think that we should probably look at and bring, you know, something back that just cleans that up a little.
All right, so council, as you look at this, if you have an area that you want to address, we will need to be able to identify that area and bring it back, letting people know that we're going to talk about that. So to approve this, we can't just all of a sudden say we're going to change F without letting people know we might change F. Is that right, Letty?
That's correct.
All right. All right, Michael?
I just have a question, I guess it's kind of more procedural. Since we had the citizen charter review earlier, the things that we're talking about changing here, which I'm not, you know, opposing anything, I'm just asking here, like, are we going to run into any kind of problems since that wasn't brought up in the charter review, or the things that we?
This is not the charter.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is just the.
Yeah, this is, the charter allows us to set our own rules, and this is our rules. This is council rules.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure there's not any, I just want to get that out there and get it on video, so that way, nothing comes up after this.
Yeah, no, that's good.
So, and it just says for official response from Letty?
I'm not official.
Just to be sure that Letty keeping us out of trouble that this is something procedural that we can do, and that it's not going to be any problems later on, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's what I said.
He didn't believe you.
Yeah, nothing, nothing personal. It's just her full-time gig.
Excuse me, you don't have the floor anymore.
I haven't finished my four minutes.
Where's the timer?
Chief Niffen.
He's finished. Okay. All right, we will move on to item 10 unless somebody wishes to speak. All right, item 10, verbal report to be provided by Councilmember Grosso regarding the August 2020 Parks and Recs Board Meeting. Michael?
This would will use the time.
No, go ahead, get, put the timer going. Ready? So, even guys, hey, so yes, we did have our Parks and Rec Board Meeting. It's been a while since COVID, I think it's about nine months since our last meeting. It was good, just kind of going over some key events here. At this point now, the pool has now closed through the summer, and it's now just open on weekends. Antonio, if you're around, just to keep me honest, I think it closes September 27th, as far as the weekends are concerned. We do have the Veteran Memorial, where you can put in quarterly now and get bricks done and have that done for the town, and have veterans put their bricks in. We also had several youth sporting events that have occurred over the weekends. They had a total of five weekend tournaments that were here in town, utilizing the baseball fields that brought in approximately $25,000 after all of our expenses, that was able to come back into the town budget for us to be able to help reallocate. So that's actually something we talked about a little bit, about that to be looked at and looked at further. Still gathering, and we had an action item of tennis courts versus pickleball courts use and kind of what that looks like. And just since it's been a while, we just, the board reemphasized with staff, looking at those numbers, are still basically monitoring the use, pickleball versus courts, to kind of be able to make an educated, data-driven decision on how the uses are of those courts. And then also, town staff will be providing numbers at the next Parks Board, Parks and Rec meeting on what they look at as far as maybe options, as far as looking at pickleball courts, tennis courts, or a combination thereof, combination of adding, what have you, modifying. So that's still under review. Going forward, we do have the adult events, both the abachi ball and kickball will be starting up, so I'm glad to see that that's going to happen. And they're actually anticipating numbers they pick up a little bit, because not all towns are allowing that to happen. We also have youth events for football, baseball, and soccer that practice is ongoing right now. And if I'm not mistaken, some baseball games will start this weekend, and shortly thereafter, football games will be right up behind that. And I did not have any information on when soccer games are starting, but it's also right around the corner as well. Barring any questions, that's all I have.
Counsel, any questions? All right, seeing no one wishing to speak, we will then move on. The next item, 11, discussion of future agenda items, future agenda item list. A copy was in the packet, and a modified copy that was more legible was distributed to everyone. Steve, you want to talk about this?
Okay. There's five items on the future agendas list that we pared down from previous month. The first one is, we just recently completed that, and that's the ILA with the mud on the exchange of facilities. That was also a big item in your Goals Retreat. The next one is the entryway mon- The next one is the entryway monumentation. That's in progress. We're still trying to get a handle on the bids that came in considerably over what we had budgeted. We should have that on your next agenda to make a decision whether we reject it, look at the timing of, you know, this was done pretty much right in the middle of summer where everybody's covered up with work. So I don't know how eager and hungry some of those contractors were. But, you know, we'll discuss that in more detail in two weeks. The strategic plan for goals and budgetary needs for each department, we're just, we just ran out of time. That's getting delayed to 2021. The rules of procedure in progress, you'll have that, of course, you discussed that this evening, and then an action item will be on your September 8th meeting, so that can be checked off the list. And also a citizen survey, that was one of the priorities, but that's about a $30,000 expense. And I know people have said, you know, we'll just do it in-house. Well, there is an art, trust me, to doing surveys. If you want it statistically accurate and not writing questions that are leading, that are drawing conclusions, et cetera, it's a, you know, we may be able to partner with a university, but it is a priority that I think needs to occur next year, and we need to look for any way possible to get that funded so we can know what our citizens are thinking as far as level of service, what their expectations, wants, and desires and needs are. So really, we're getting some of these checked off, and if there's some items that you would like to put on the list, we can sure do that. And as we said, we'll research that ASAP, get you out a kind of a one-page email to see what, if that answers your question, or if you'd like to see more research done. So those are my comments. Mayor?
So I want to call attention to rules of procedure item 1.03.035, letter B, which deals with future agenda items. So this particular section talks about kind of how it'll work, and says the mayor and any two council members may add something to the future agenda list. So recognize that, like tonight, this is before us, the future agenda list. If somebody wanted to add something, it can only be added if there is support from two council members or the mayor, and it's really not something to debate. So Sean could say, I want to add this to future agenda. And somebody might have a question, and now we're starting to debate if we start really talking about that too much. So either you have support or you don't have support to add it. So your job as council is to say, okay, based on what I've heard from Sean, I'm willing to get it on the agenda. So you say, I'll support putting it on the future agenda list. So one person can't just add it and staff spend time getting ready for it without us really ready to do something in the future with it. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Now, I'm not sure that all of this in B deals with that appropriate, Letty. So we maybe need to look at some of that wording.
Sure.
Well, it's interesting, too, that it says the agenda. So it's not clear if we're seeing every agenda.
Right.
Or one agenda a year, or, you know what I'm saying? So we may want to specify that to, you know.
Yeah, it kind of is mixed up there as if it's talking about a regular agenda, but then at the top it says future agenda items. So what is it really referring to?
Well, it says the agenda shall provide a time when you can put something on the future agenda.
Right.
So it's almost as if, you know, that's probably why it was on every agenda, but it's really not clear. It's not saying it has to be on every agenda.
Does that make sense? So that'd be something that we want to try to at least get better. So Steve, appreciate getting this out and working that towards something that we can do. Does anybody wish to have something added to the future agenda at this time?
Yes.
All right. Philip?
Well, I would like to take credit for this, and probably I should, but I'll give him credit. Ryland Rowe sent me an email this week, and back in 2015, we worked on a, with the mud, in conjunction with the mud, we worked on a hazardous mitigation plan. And I don't know if we, whatever became of that, or if we still have that. And it was completed by Freeze and Nichols at the time. And in that, it says at a minimum, the update, or it should be updated every five years. That was a comment from Freeze and Nichols. Well, Ryland says it's been four years and 10 months. So anyway, we may want to look at that and see if that is, and it may be as simple as just continuing the plan and everything, or it may be that we want to change something, or it may be that, I don't know. Anyway, if you can look into that hazardous mitigation action plan.
All right, I'll support that item being added.
Well, there you go. It's all I needed. The mayor.
All right. Anybody else?
I had a question to speak here, and I guess I have a question here. So on the two items that we have here right now that have been delayed to 2021, and I'm not asking to add anything here just for clarification, and so what I'm asking, though, here is, I guess, just for the record that we talked a little bit about offline, about coming into 2021 and looking at the kind of the path forward and doing our off-site, and since we will have an election between now and then, do we need to basically have another, schedule another work session or request another work session? Or something that's kind of to put the ball in motion, to have a meeting with staff and have a roundtable to be able to help staff facilitate items of discussion and gathering information for our January meeting? Since those two items, both three and five, have been delayed, do we need to, I guess two is in progress, how do we need to, I guess, procedurally handle that? Is that something to request another meeting in November, since I think we're going to have one between like November and December?
Correct.
Or is that something we can take care of administratively, that maybe we just have a work session prior to that one November meeting?
That's up to you guys. I mean, if you want to do it, we can.
Well, no disagreement, we need to have the January meeting, the off-site. I guess what I'm asking for is, usually in the January meeting, the couple that we've been a part of, we talk about a lot of things. We had a great discussion this past year, and like everybody talked about last meeting, you did a great job of circling back and answering your letters, some of those hot topics we had from that off-site. That was just a lot of information that we gathered. And I'm just asking, since we're going to have a pretty, well, three new members coming into January, do we need to have something ahead of time to that meeting to kind of set the precedent so staff has time to get together information for that January meeting?
So I think the question is, do you want to add that to future agenda list as related to the strategic plan that's in our future agenda list?
Yeah.
And I see that as an administrative function of staff, and the town manager, if he's going to meet that, will satisfy that need. That's how that works.
Then I would draw any kind of comments there.
Okay. Anybody else?
Redact. I redact those comments. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have something to add to future agenda or discuss in reference to that? Okay. So we will move on to our executive session. It is 8:19 PM, and we will convene into executive session after I read this item. Executive session pursuant to Section 551-071, consultation with town attorney on a matter on which the attorney has a duty to keep confidentiality pursuant to the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct. Section 551.074, personnel matters. The item under that is discuss the legality and procedures of contracting with independent contractors to perform for the town. We are in executive session.
See the red light yet? [S02] Shh, I know, others see it.
It is 8:58 PM. We have returned from executive session and we will reconvene into our regular session. We don't have any action items to take at this time. Does anyone have anything? Here ain't no one or seeing no one sitting on the floor. It is 8:58 and we stand adjourned.